Let's begin to hand for the.
Good afternoon and welcome to the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Arthur Riddick, the twenty twenty-two Chair of the Board, and I'm joined this evening by Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Vice Chair, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Ray Freeman, Commissioner Jonathan Craddock, County Attorney Philip Godwin, Clerk to the Board Jolita Chestnut, County Manager Tim Wilson is absent this afternoon. Let us stand for the opening prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, this once again that we've gathered here in your presence to contend to the Gates County Board Commissioners' regular meeting. We ask that you settle down with us this afternoon, and we ask that you bless all this about to happen. We also, Heavenly Father, want to think about and pray for those in Ukraine, also those in this county that are sick and shut in, to believe that we had lost this last met. We also want to pray, Heavenly Father, for all the leadership that not only in Gates County, but state, local, federal, that have been elected, will be elected, that you guide them in their understanding that they do not lean into their own understanding, but depend and rest in you. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
I would do it to the flag of the United States of America, just a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice law.
All right, first we need to take a look at the agenda there. At least two amendments we have to make to the regular agenda. One is the fact that the North Carolina Department of Transportation yearly update will not be in attendance for a presentation. They have illness and they said they would reschedule. We have our auditor here today, and I would like a motion by the board, since he's here and he has to lead, that when we talk about, in your, in your package, you said we're going to discuss the audit contract. So when he comes up to do his presentation, he would like to, we'll go right into that. So I need an amendment to the regular agenda for that.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion concerning our audit.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's amended. Are there any other amendments to the regular agenda? Okay, now we go down to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we accept the consent agenda as printed, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, have it. Madam Clerk, are there any comments by the citizens?
Yes, ma'am. The first is, I'm right.
Mr. Bright?
Subject foul department.
Good evening, Dr. Riddick and Board members. Take a few more minutes of time. I want to thank you that you're still pursuing the nine-one-one radios and updating us, and I'm looking forward to having, I hope, the state-of-the-art communications that we can possibly afford at this time to help protect our emergency responders and the people. The next issue is, is we look at our county assets. It seems like those of us in emergency services are somewhat left out. We're asking that as these things start to unfold, now that we have a new person in charge, that we could probably have some input, either a committee or however you see fit to do that, that you hear our side of the story. Most of the time, fire and EMS kind of get left out of these things. And we in this area think it's a bunch of volunteers that are just out here doing it a little bit at the time. But we do have certified personnel ready to do these things, whether it be driving a truck, or whether it be operating a boat, or whatever, but we have members that are certified and will be glad to step up to the plate and help fulfill these vacancies. The next thing is, there's some federal grant money that will be coming up available next year for the possibility of us doing a training center. I've been pursuing this grant for several years now, and I don't know how far we'll get, but I am going to apply for the grant. But we would have to have somewhere to put that building, and we'd have, might have to have some matching money to the tune of five percent with that. So I don't know how far that'd go, but I will apply for that grant. Anything we can do to upgrade the health and safety and welfare of our firefighters and get them better trained, as well as our EMS and working with the sheriff's department, will be a good thing. And the county has the property at, at the old prison, that would be an excellent place for that. But we continue to look forward to your support, and we continue to give our time to help our county that we so do love and the citizens therein. And it's nice to have the communication center back up and going. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Emily Truman, back to her meeting time.
First off, just on behalf of the dispatchers, we wanted to say thank you to Commissioners Craddock and Freeman for helping us out with some chairs and dispatch, as our chairs broke a couple of weeks ago, and then also to EM one for getting those chairs replaced. I know that's been brought up at lots of different meetings. But we did have some that we were able to borrow, and then we've had new ones come in since then, so we do appreciate that. The only other major thing really is the meeting times, which I was very excited to see on the agenda this month. I've heard from many others, they were very excited. And we're very hopeful that you will take into consideration the requests that have been being made for months now to move the meeting times back to the six-thirty time slot. As many people do have to take off early from work if they want to be here. I think that's true possibly for even some of the commissioners sitting here, that they have to leave early in order to be here. So we just ask that you please consider that. The attendance the last few months, I think, has been a good thing, and I feel like it could be more, should the meeting times be more appropriate. And then the last thing was, as we move forward with what has been known as COVID money, just ask that you please consider the true infrastructure as you're going forward with the plans for those funds. The water system, the fire hydrants, nine-one-one, all things I've mentioned before. I had the opportunity to go meet with one of the fire departments in the county recently within the past couple of weeks, and was told that they actually have a fire hydrant that is out of service in a couple of areas of their district. And that's concerning because water hall then becomes a requirement, and sometimes that makes things more difficult. So as you move forward and considering those things, I do ask that you please listen to the pleas of your first responders and to the pleas of your citizens in how to handle the use of that money. So, thank you.
Last speaker is Anthony Sanders, Housing.
Good evening. First of all, I'd just like to say to the board, thank you, to our county attorney and our, and our county manager. What if your roof leaked every time it rained? What if the sheet rock in your house fell on you, in your living room, in your kitchen, and in your bedroom? What if your toilet never flushes, and you have to plunge it every time you get ready to use it? What if you smell mold and mildew in your home all the time? What if your wood stove was so holy that the acids from the stove would fall on the floor and possibly set your house on fire? Roaches, mice, all in your cabinets? These were just a few of the conditions that four families here in Gates County lived through for a long period of time. When these families came to the Housing Committee for help, I knew that day that, I knew the day that I condemned those, three of those four homes, that a replacement was the only answer for these families, and the journey began. The Board of Commissioners and the Housing Committee worked hard for a while to make this project work. So tonight I say thank you to all of the Housing Committee members, and the county attorney, county manager, and all of the Board of Commissioners, who kept this project moving in a positive way. Commissioners continue to, continue to move the county forward in a positive way. Soon we will see, hopefully, a Hardee's, McDonald's, Burger King, CVS, Walgreens in Gates County, just like they are in our surrounding counties. I would like to say and give a special thanks to the late Reverend Dr. Henry Jordan. He kept us lifted up from the, lifted up from the Board of Commissioners, when we really felt sometimes this day would never come. Board, you guys and the Housing Committee have made a qual, have made the quality of life better for four families here in the county, and that's a good, that's a good feeling. Keep up the good work and stay positive, work for the county, and continue to move on. And for those who don't really know exactly what I'm talking about, there's four families who have, their homes have been demolished in the last couple of weeks, and there are new modular homes are coming in. Hopefully, these families will be in their homes in the next couple of weeks, three at the most. So it's, it's, it's a good feeling when you know you have helped somebody, especially to make the quality of life better. So again, I say thank you to you guys. I know sometime you got frustrated at us as a housing board. Thank Reba Holly for taking the leadership and helping push this with you guys. So again, I say thank you, continue the good work that you're doing here in the county. Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
The last speaker? Now we'll hear from the, Mr. Tim Lyons with Malden and Jenkins LLC, will do the audit presentation, me approach. And you've heard that we amended the agenda so that when you finish your presentation, we'll discuss the contract.
Yeah, that sounds great. And I figured because I heard that the NCDOT is not coming, I can just take their time too, right? If you have here for a couple of hours, we'll run through them. Appreciate y'all having me here tonight.
For a little levity, I heard the guys down there talking about March Madness or something, so.
Everybody's got somewhere to be. So what I've got here is a.
We need to take a recess for just a couple of minutes, so he can pull that up and turn it around.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
My IT person wants to, let's take a two-minute recess.
Two and a minute and a half.
He's going to move that. Okay.
I tell you what, I'm glad you're not using COT, it'd be, it's interesting sometimes.
Commissioners, you have a copy of his presentation at your seats.
And the contract is, should be new business.
Back in session, Mr. Malden, Mr. Lyons, excuse me.
So what you all have in front of you is a, is a hard copy printout of what's on the screen here, just a few kind of PowerPoint slides to, to, in essence, to go over the results of the county's fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, financial and compliance audit. So as it says on the inside of that first page there that says Agenda, it's really, just we'll go quickly over the engagement team, the results of the audit. We've got a few slides on some financial ratios and trends that we typically like to talk about, and then some comments, recommendations, and then certainly if y'all have any questions. I've got a slide at the end for that, and certainly as I'm going, if y'all have any questions, feel free to, to stop me there. But that, the next slide there about the engagement team, I include this in here just to point out that, you know, this is, when we conduct an audit, there's a minimum of two partners at our firm that are involved with every single audit. And I served as the engagement partner, so ultimately I'm the one responsible for the county's audit, signing the reports and those things. And then James Benz, who is another partner in our governmental practice, serves the role of Engagement Quality Control Review. And basically, he's not involved in the audit at all. When we finish, myself and the other members of the team get finished, we send this whole report and file over to James and have him look, do a completely independent review. So we really, you know, engagement quality is very important to us. And we know we have, you know, high ethical standards we have to follow as the independent CPAs. But just in our own governmental practice, this is very important because we do spend a lot of time working with governments throughout the year, and we take it very seriously. So those, that was your engagement team for the, for the twenty twenty-one audit. On the next page there, we have the results of the audit. And, you know, the, the highlights from this slide really kind of starts with that second main bullet point that says, "Report on the twenty twenty-one basic financial statements." You know, the most important thing is, what sort of opinion did we render on the financial statements? So we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the county's financial statements. There is no higher or better opinion that you can get. Unmodified is a fancy accounting auditing term for clean. So, so a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is, which is the most important part. The next couple of slides that we have, what, what this, these are known as what are called the required communications. So these are the things that we, as your independent CPA, have to submit to those charged with governance. We have to submit them to you in writing, which, which I have done. And so I don't plan to go through and read every single one of these. I think there are a few of these that are important to point out, so I'll touch on those briefly. Underneath that first bullet point where it says significant accounting policies, the fourth item down, it talks about the implementation of a new accounting standard. So if you do, if you have the county's financial report, if you ever kind of do a side-by-side and flip and just see what changed, how did things change from year to year, you will notice that in the past, we had pages in there for what were known as agency funds, where the county is essentially kind of acting as a pass-through. Now those are called fiduciary funds or custodial funds. So they do look a little bit different, but that was brought about by a new accounting standard, Gatsby Statement Number eighty-four. So that is a, a new statement that we had to implement in the, in the twenty twenty-one financial statements. On that next page, the second bullet point there that says relationship with management, we received full cooperation from the county's management and staff. I always like to touch on this, and what does that mean? We were hanging out, you know, going out for drinks afterwards, that's not what that means. Full cooperation means when we, when we conduct an audit, we ask for a lot of documentation, access to records, access to individuals in different departments and what have you. Full cooperation means that we, those things were given to us without any sort of issues. We were not, we didn't feel like we had any, you know, point in time where we were having things withheld from us. We didn't have any difficulty getting access to people or systems or what have you. So full cooperation from management, I think, is important to point out. And also, I just would take a, a second to say that I appreciate all of Kim's hard work during the audit, again, working through the challenges of COVID. We did the majority of the audit remotely again. Was difficult, as it has been for a couple of years with all that, but appreciate all of Kim and her team's hard work to do that. The next bullet point there, audit adjustments. I think it's important to point out, that second hash mark there that says there were no unrecorded adjustments. Sometimes when we conduct an audit, we can identify a difference or an adjustment, and maybe end up, we decide for one reason or another, not to post it. It's not, it's considered immaterial or something like that. We didn't have any of those this year. So no unrecorded adjustments, everything is considered that we identified, has been included in the county's financial statements. And then last, the last required communication there, the bottom one that says auditor independence on the, on the next page. Always like to touch on this, just to remind folks, we, we have to be completely independent of the county in order to conduct an audit and render a opinion on the county's financial statements. Not only do we have to be independent in accordance with our ethical standards, with our, which is set by the American Institute of CPAs, but in accordance with government auditing standards, because we are auditing federal and state awards, which are even more stringent than our professional standards. So have to be independent of the county in order to render an opinion. The next couple of slides we have, talk just a little bit about some financial ratios. Fund balance in the general fund, obviously very important, something that everybody wants to talk about and look at. At the end of the county's fiscal year that ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one, unassigned fund balance was about thirty-nine percent of annual expenditures. So how does that rank us compared to other counties of similar size? Which you can see, similar counties in North Carolina, we're kind of right on par with what other counties of similar size are. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend, kind of their benchmark would be between sixty and, and I've seen sixty and ninety, sixteen, one hundred and twenty days. But either way, the county's unassigned fund balance in the general fund is in a, is in a good position there at June thirty, twenty twenty-one. So that's a, that's a good thing to see, and you can see, we've seen over the last four years, how that fund balance has trended up and trended into where it is, where it was at June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The, the next slide is just some tax revenue per capita, just kind of looking broadly at taxes and how it fares per capita, especially when compared to, again, other counties in the state, I think is a relevant, a relevant comparison. Six hundred and forty-two dollars per person about, when you look at the total tax revenues divided by the county's population. The smallest twenty counties in the state, which would be where Gates would fall, about seven hundred and twenty-five dollars a person versus statewide, if we look at every single county, about seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars per person. So you can see where that the tax burden per person or per capita in Gates County is a little bit below those averages, but certainly not significantly out of whack or anything like that. The next slide, looking at the general fund's budget. I think the biggest thing to take away, when we looked at the general fund for the year, the final budget reflected a anticipated addition to fund balance. So where we're going to put some money in reserve, to call it that, was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-one, the county added about one point nine million dollars to fund balance for the fiscal year. So again, that kind of, kind of fits, fits in with that other chart that shows fund balance kind of continually growing the last four years. And when we started working with the county four years ago, fund balance was fairly low, and we've seen it kind of continue to, to trend in the right direction the last few years. The biggest significant revenues in excess of budget, sales taxes, which is a pretty common trend we see across most of our counties in the state the last couple of years. There were, especially when, when COVID hit, there was a lot of warnings about, we don't know what this is going to happen. And pretty consistently across the board, we've seen sales tax revenues and ABC revenues continue to go up. So everybody went home and drank and online shopped, is basically what happened when the pandemic happened. So the next slide is just the county, looking at the county's two enterprise funds, the landfill fund and the water fund. You know, these funds, the, the basis of accounting is a little bit different with these funds than, than with the general fund. We're on the full accrual basis of accounting, so a lot of times, it's more important to look at cash flows. That's kind of with, with, with business-type activities like the landfill and the water fund, we're looking at these more like a private sector business, and we're looking at cash flows, and both funds had positive cash flows from operations this year. And while the water fund had a decrease in net position for the year, so, you know, a net decrease in equity, if you want to look at it that way, of about four hundred thousand dollars. Important to consider there is about three hundred thousand of it was depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. That's where we're recording that, the annual depreciation on the assets used in the water system. So overall, both funds at the end of the year have a, a positive balance in unrestricted net position. So again, no, no significant deficits, we're not, you know, we're not operating at a significant operating loss, or we're not using, you know, no consumption of cash in operations. Those are the main things you, you're looking for when you're looking at the enterprise funds. The next slide talks a little bit about our single audit engagement. Essentially, what, what this is, is as a part of the county's annual audit, we also have to look at the grants, look at different grant activity. This year, we had to, we had to audit two major federal programs. We did not have any state single audits. The county's total state expenditures for grant programs did not exceed the threshold for having to have any grants audited. The two major programs, Medicaid, this is required to be tested annually. Annually, we have to test this. The State Department of DHHS and the state requires we test this. And then the coronavirus relief funds, or the CARES Act money, this is different. And this is not the ARPA or CSL FRF, depending upon what y'all are calling that. This is not, it's not what this is. County didn't spend any of that money last year. This is the coronavirus relief funds that were received in the previous year. So we had to audit both of those. We had no, no findings, no issues with internal controls over compliance. So a, a clean opinion on the single audit as well. The next couple of slides are really just some recommendations. We, we call these management recommendations or management points. These are items that came up during the audit that we just feel like are important to point out, talk about with management. This first one has to do with the financial reporting process. And what we've talked about with Kim is that while the county's finance department is small, relatively speaking, and we're not talking about a big, you know, multi-department decentralized operation, but a lot of the, a lot of the process for doing financial close and closing out the year is not written down, documented, well, well-documented. And the idea there would be that if something were to happen, having somebody that can step in and kind of perform those procedures, having a, a well-documented process for financial close, for year-end wrap-up, and all those types of things. So just a recommendation that we would, we would take some time and put, put some pen to paper there and come up with a, a written-out process for that financial closeout process. The next management point that we have, we've, we consider this sort of an industry recommendation. This is something that we, we talk about with a lot of our clients. This does not mean that we did any sort of in-depth IT testing, or identified any significant issues or what have you. But we do know that unfortunately, IT systems can be hacked for a long time. It was governments of fairly large sizes, but now we're seeing it happen to governments of all sizes. And so just a recommendation that we, especially as we continue to move into this environment where more is being done remotely, more things are being done in the clouds, more devices are being connected to our network, all those types of things, that we just consider cybersecurity risk management and all the decisions that we're making and make sure that we're paying attention to it because of the risks that are present in the environment nowadays. attention to it because of the risks that are present in the environment nowadays. The last slide that I have with, with information on it really just has to do with a couple of slides on things that are happening right now. We have a new, couple of new accounting standards we'll be implementing in the next couple of years. I was meeting with Kim earlier, talking about this first one here about Gatsby 87, which is leases. I could stand up here and talk about technical accounting things for a while, but you all don't want me to do that. So I'll just say that we are aware of those things and working with the county to make sure we get them implemented correctly. We know that on the next slide, there's still a ton going on at the federal level related to COVID, all the different funding streams, all the different things that we're seeing out there. You know, we've, Kim and I have talked through a couple of these things today as well, and just making sure that we're paying attention to all the things that continue to happen. The LGC has done a pretty good job of trying to keep everybody informed and up to speed on all the different issues that have popped up with, related to all these different funding streams that have come out from the federal government since the beginning of COVID. And then last, but not least, just to remind you all that we do free quarterly continuing education for all of our governmental clients. Certainly if any of y'all want to be on that email distribution list, just get, get your email address to Kim, and she can get it to me, and I'll make sure that y'all receive the communications on there. And so with that, I am happy to take any questions that you all have.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Tim?
No, I would just say this is the best presentation I've had. My U.S. County Commissioner is very clear and understandable. Most of the time, it's not.
Thank you.
Well presented.
Thank you.
I have one question, when you were talking about management recommendations
Yeah.
over there. And you said something about documentation and like a closeout and things like that. Is there a template that you could provide to us?
Sure.
That would benefit?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we have, we provide at the beginning of the audit, this, this, these documents that are called internal control questionnaires. Kim probably loves having to get them and review them and fill them out. They're, they're, they're kind of cumbersome, but they do, those include a lot of examples of controls that you would want to see in the financial closeout, wrap up, year end process. And then beyond that, I know the GFOA, the Government Finance Officer Association, they've got a bunch of best practices, toolkits, what have you, so can certainly provide, you know, Kim, recommendations on any of those type things to kind of base it on. The biggest thing with, that we would talk, make sure we talk through is with a small finance department, we want to continue to maintain segregation of duties. And so that's the biggest challenge with a small finance department, we want to make sure that we don't allow any significant controls to be performed by one person, you know, where you could have control of a transaction from beginning to end. That's the biggest challenge with a small finance department, is making sure that if, you know, as best you can, mitigating controls, putting those in place, and making sure that we get others involved as we need to. But we can work with Kim on that for sure.
And then the other question that I had is on the free.
Yes, sir.
Quarterly continuing education.
Yes, sir.
And so I just, just briefly looked, looked over that, and it does say locations on there, so is, are you actually doing it, location or you Zoom?
We're doing it all Zoom right now. Everything we've been doing, we've been, it's been all virtual since the second quarter of 2020. And it's, it's funny you bring that up. We've, we've had conversations before about, do we want to go back to doing it in person? But we've, the attendance has been so much greater doing it over Zoom, that we probably will continue to offer at least once per quarter, free, continually, continue to do it virtually, where we have access to it, either over Zoom or some other online platform.
Madam Chair, I would, I would make sure that county, county manager sees that back page there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want to segue into the contract, Kim. I know you're in here. Commissioner, if you turn to your packet, you will see a memorandum prepared by our finance officer, Kim Outland, about Gates County's three-year audit contract has ended as of the FY '21 audit. Okay? Have y'all read that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It states that, for the, for the audience, LLC has provided wonderful services to Gates County over the past three years. I have worked with them. If I have ever needed an answer to a financial question, they have always been very prompt and informative. They were instrumental in assisting us during all the necessary cleanup after the software conversion in 2018. I have attached a three-year cost proposal to extend our contract with Malden and Jenkins LLC for the board to review. My recommendation would be to continue with this company as outlined in the proposal. Action needed once we have reviewed it. The board needs to make a motion and vote on approval or denial of the extension of the contract with Malden and Jenkins to provide audit services for Gates County for an additional three years.
I make a motion that we approve the contract for an additional three years.
And I'll second that motion. Very good job.
It's been properly motion and second that we continue the three-year contract with Malden and Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you, Tim. We'll see you again.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Now we'll have two presentations back to back. The first will be the housing, committed by Ms. Reba Green-Hallie.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. First, I'd like to do the housing report. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the support that you give the Housing Committee. And for those who don't know, the Housing Committee is here to assist with elderly, disabled, low-income and/or veterans, to help them with health and safety issues in their home that will help them stay in their homes much longer, which eventually addresses us as taxpayers, saving dollars on Medicaid if they have to go into assisted living. And this committee was started years ago out of the need DSS saw, Department of Social Services here in the county, with housing standards and safety issues with its citizens. We are a 501(c)(3), and we are a committee made up of people here in the county. And I think some of them in the audience, but just so you'll know who's on this committee, and if they're here, if they'll please stand, I know some are virtual. We have Rita Blair with EIC, Joan Bond representing the community, MacArthur Brit Faith Organization, Shakira Jordan with EIC, myself, New Middle Swamp Baptist Church Representative Shirley Johnson, and Valerie Riddick, Gates County Transportation System, Patrice Lassiter. Dr. Althea Riddick is representing the Commissioners, Anthony Saunders representing the community, and Willie Smith representing Department of Social Services. And we do welcome any other people in the community who would like to be on this committee. Our report for 21, 21, 22, even though COVID has impacted us for the last couple of years, we were able to reach 13, we received 13 housing repair requests, and out of that, two were not qualified for service. Four were referred to state grant funds that Burnett and Associates had. One was referred to EIC. Two tarps were installed on a roof. Two roof repairs were done. Two were referred to the Roanoke Electric Upgrade to Save program, and one was referred to independent living. Even though COVID has impacted us, we are still getting requests for assistance. We've served as a sounding board for the clients who had complaints concerning the status of the replacement grant, because we were the committee that identified the four individuals who qualified for that, those replacement homes. And when those funds were received, they didn't have to go searching for people. They were already on a waitlist for any funding that came in. So quite naturally, anytime they were trying to find out information, they were coming to us to find out for them. And we're glad to hear that the progress has moved forward on those four homes, because they are elderly individuals, and we were just hoping they'd get to get in those homes before anything happened. We also have secured two volunteers to assist with small home repairs, and we collaborate with Roanoke Electric with their Upgrade to Save and SolarShare program that works with trying to help with energy efficiency and helping since in our area, 50% or more of the homes are substandard. We received church donations, and also we have been meeting and developed a comprehensive marketing and branding plan to increase awareness of housing assistance here in the county. We have gone live with a webpage, which is GCHousing.com.org. And we also have resources listed on that website for people who might need additional housing information. Our application is listed there that you can pull off, and you can either fill it out online and then print it off and send it to us, or you can print it off and fill it out by hand. It lists all the members and our mission on that website. We also are in the process of having PayPal and Amazon Smile set up so donations can come in. We meet monthly, the third Monday, from 1:00 to 2:00 via Zoom currently. We were in person before COVID. And then I think the members, Ms. Chestnut has a list of the members attached to the report that I gave her. And I think that concludes my report for housing. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Hallie?
Okay.
Okay. I think that the website has that report, I hope.
I will put it, I will put it up.
I want to put that on the website. And while I'm thinking about it, we're also going to post the audit that the Lions went through. We can put that on the website, so if you want to go back and look at it, it'll be available to the citizens.
Okay. All right, now I would like to move into the Rosenwall School presentation. I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Rosenwall School activities in Gates County. And I'll start with a brief explanation of the Rosenwall Schools. There are four key aspects to Rosenwall School movement and legacy. The Rosenwall Schools held a special place in history and represented a landmark in the history of African-American education. The Rosenwall School construction project began in response to the lack of adequate schools for African-American children in the rural South that followed key historic and antecedent events such as the Civil War and the abolishment of slavery in 1865 and the 1896 landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in Plessy versus Ferguson that declared separate but equal facilities did not violate the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. The second key aspect is North Carolina lacked a uniform system for state-supported education and adequate schools for the education of African-American children, and were lacking, and they were lacking in the rural South. The Rosenwall School Project was the first major movement committed to advancing the cause of education on behalf of African-American children in rural South. The value of an education, this is the third point, was shared by African-American leaders and families. The national leader Booker T. Washington called upon wealthy northern philanthropists such as Julius Rosenwall, president of Sears and Roebuck Company, to donate funds for the building of schools for African-American children in rural South. As a result, the Rosenwall Fund was established in 1917 for the well-being of mankind. The fund called for public-private partnerships and required that members of the local white and black communities collaborate and raise money to qualify for matching funds. Principles of personnel and shared responsibility for the betterment of the race and mankind, and the belief education was critical to self-sufficiency and preparing individuals for work and productive roles in society were embedded in the Rosenwall School movement. The fourth bullet is even though the Rosenwall Schools were conceived in response to an epic time in history and to address or correct the unequal status of education in schools for African-American children in the rural South, by virtue of changes in history, they are also, they also eventually became identified with the negativity of segregation. In 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education declared separate but equal schools were unconstitutional. Most Rosenwall Schools have fallen prey to age and neglect. However, both the physical structure and the historical heritage of Rosenwall Schools must be restored and preserved, or we risk losing an important part of our history. Carrie Pittman was credited for building 28 Rosenwall Schools in eastern North Carolina. The Rosenwall Schools held, hold a unique place in history, and they also held a special place in the hearts and minds of African-American families who fought and made sacrifices so their children could receive an education. Some of that was excerpt from Brenda Hamilton, who was the granddaughter of Gary Pittman, Carrie Pittman, who gave the Rosenwall Homecoming speech that was held here October 30, 2013, in Gates County. There were six Rosenwall Schools in Gates County. Buckland, Cora Peak, Hobbsville, Reed's Grove, which is the EIC building, a lot of people call it, Rennelson, and Roduka Number Two. Currently, there are three standing. Roduka, which is a private residence, Cora Peak School, and Reed's Grove School, which is the EIC building. Buckland transitioned into Buckland Training School, which is now Buckland Elementary, and Sunbury transitioned to Sunbury Training School, which is now TS Cooper School. Reed's Grove School is owned by the county. In 2011, with the Growing Gates Strategic Planning Process that involved the residents of Gates County, the goal was to identify economic development strategies that would help bring tourism to the county. The designation of the Reed's Grove School as a historic building was one of those strategies. Funding was obtained from two grants, the Growing Gates Project, which is currently a part of the current Gates County strategic plan developed in 2021, and New Generation Youth Leadership Project, which involved four Hers. As a result, the historic application was submitted and approved August 30, 2011. Two historic markers were placed on site. The Reed's Grove Homecoming Program was held October 30, 2013. A booklet was compiled and a copy was given to the Historic Society, along with many of the alumni of these schools. We recorded interviews with them, so we would have them for history's sake. The project would not have been possible without the assistance of the Reed Grove Alumni Committee. This was a collaboration of Gates County Extension, Local Government, Youth, and Adults. Currently, the Cora Peak alumni and friends are interested in preserving their school. I will be working with them to achieve this goal. We welcome Commissioner Hoffler to assist as the, as the preservation of history is her passion. Commissioners, even though some renovations have been done on the Reed's Grove School in the past, attention was not, and has not been given to ensuring renovations and maintenance of the interior was or will be completed in a fashion that would support the integrity of the historic building and bring it back to its original glory. I ask that the integrity of the building be restored with some attention and care, with the same attention and care as was done with this historic courthouse. I also ask that Commissioners support Rosenwall School activities in Gates County. In addition, the Reed Grove School, Cora Peak School, and identification of locations of others with markers is an asset to the county African-American tour project that Commissioner Hoffler is pursuing. We also welcome Commissioner Hoffler with any other suggestion and ideas. We also welcome Commissioner Hoffler with any other suggestion and ideas. There are others in the audience that support the Rosenwall Schools in Gates County. And Madam Chair, if you would like for them to raise their hand or stand, please do so.
They may raise their hand or stand if they're in the office.
In closing, we are who we are today due to these types of schools and the vision of Julius Rosenwall and Booker T. Washington and our forefathers who knew the importance of equality education. This has not changed during our times. And I quote, "If you want to understand today, you have to search yesterday." A PowerPoint of the Rosenwall Schools has been presented to the Commissioners, and it is going to be loaded on the Commissioner's webpage for those that are interested. In addition, Fish University has a Rosenwall School database. And so I was going to get this done before I retired, but it didn't happen, but it's happening now. We have only four pictures of the Rosenwall Schools that were here in Gates County. This was the Hobbsville Old School. These are going to be hung in the Reed Grove School. This one is Hobbsville. This was a second building that was done in Hobbsville. This one is the building that's in Cora Peak that is currently still standing. And this one is what Reed's Grove School looked like initially. I have pictures of the one in Roduka, but since it is a private residence, I did not want to put those up. And also the comments that were made on the four aspects of the history of Rosenwall Schools will be hung with that. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Are there any questions or comment from Ms. Green Hollis? She's stuck there at the podium.
Well, certainly, I have known about Rosenwall Schools for numerous years, and I was at the 2013 program, I believe. I spoke there.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Freeman was there as well. And I can remember the Hobbsville School, so it has been destroyed since, or has disappeared since in the last 20 years, I guess. And we need to preserve those. This African-American Heritage Trail, they want to have places to visit, not just a sign. They want something to go into and all. And I would suggest maybe that you might want to tour Jarvisburg and Cora Cutt County. They have done an excellent job restoring that to the original kind of the layout and all. And they do have that, that you might want to check with them and also step with Reed Thomas.
We have checked with Reed Thomas when we did the initial Reed's Grove, and I have all his recommendations for how the building should look and what we should do to preserve the historical aspects of it. Just some of the repairs or replacement of lights have not been historically correct. And there is a divisional wall that pulls down that makes it into two classrooms. It was a two-classroom school. And that wall is still in the wall, but it has been covered up with sheet rock, et cetera, and that really needs to be.
And that's probably a very easy fix. But you still have the platform and the larger meeting room that's pretty much in that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
There's a wall in the Reed's Building that was erected a few years ago. I don't believe it goes all the way to the ceiling. Are you talking about taking that wall down?
No. It depends on when you talk with Reed Thomas, what they suggest, but at least having the wall that divided the two restored and go back and take the fluorescent lights out and put the, they had lights similar to this one hanging there. And just, there are some cosmetic things that can be done in his recommendations to keep it more on the historical perspective versus what some of the things that have been done. And of course, they do have recommendations of the paint colors, et cetera, because these were all built to enhance the light, using the natural light, et cetera, to help with learning process. And so I have all of that.
Any other questions or comments for, if she's come before?
Great presentation.
Thank you. And the Cora Peak individuals are going to start meeting to figure out what they can do with the building. It's located beside their church.
I see Mrs. Byrd with the.
Yes. Help with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the presentation, very enlightening to many of us. And we will, as a board, we will have some discussion about what we need to do as a Board of Commissioners. We own the building, this county building, so. So, but thank you. She did a lot of work. She called me a couple of months ago with all this paraphernalia and things in her attic, and I didn't know what she was talking about. And she contacted Fish University, and the money that was used to frame those pictures, they already had those funds. No county funds were used to do that per se. So she already had, left over from the other committees, I guess, when y'all was meeting. And so she went to work and got that done, and I appreciate it on behalf of the board. We really appreciate that work you put in.
I forgot to say there will be little plaques put on the pictures in order.
Little plaques put on the pictures, so I guess description, they're on order. Ms. Hoffler, I know you're the historian, and I know you have your plate full, but you're the historian for the county and worked very closely with their committee when they get their committee together to ensure that we stay in form and task it. Anybody want to help, Ms. Hoffler? Just raise your hand.
I'll accept help.
If she needs help, I'll be laying her help.
Okay.
Now, y'all, well, you're sure it is credit. Commissioner Credit's going to help.
Let me write this down.
Write that down.
I'm not going to sign without help.
Thank you again, and thank you for volunteering.
Madam Chair, we didn't spend a lot of thank you time on the Housing Committee, but they deserve our applause for the work that they do and the people who volunteer along with them. And I know they're not all here, and I know that Anthony can tell you that the numbers, number of volunteers used to be a little bit larger. I can, I can remember that myself. But we need to applaud what they've done.
All right. I'd like to say I forgot to mention that I was in Hurford last week with Michael Irvin, who's the director of Admiral Commission. He's the one that's writing, will have written the grant for our urgent repair program. And we're waiting on information whether we're going to get granted for that. But he did, I did mention the Housing Committee, and they are very interested in using the Housing Committee to formal, you know, applications to them because they're in the county. And so I'm going to let him know that Reba Green Hollis has presented, he knows who Reba is, and showed us Sharon Smith. She's their program developer, their grant, right? And they want to work with the county, with the Housing Committee, when we get that grant, not if, but when we get that grant, so that we can have a seamless from our citizens to Admiral Commission. Now, we're going to have administrative reports. Mr. Chris Hill, tax report.
How are y'all?
Hey, how are you?
In your packet, you should have the February 2022 Tax Collector's Report. You'll notice that we did collect about $260,000 in February. That put our collection rate up about 1% higher than it was at this time last year. Funds from the DMV are still strong, $82,000 in DMV funds. We have sent any delinquent accounts to the Gates County Index, so that'll be out next week. We received $4,600 from Zikeas Legal Services in the month of February. Any other questions regarding the report?
Any questions from the Commissioners?
I did want to bring up, it's on the agenda, the dates for the Board of Equalization Review. In past years, we've tried to combine those with Commissioners' meetings since we're all here at one time. So if it pleases the Board, I look at the calendar, and it looks like, to me, the next date for Commissioners' meeting will be the 20th of April, and the one after that will be the 18th of May. If we can convene and reconvene on one of those dates if that pleases the Board.
Is this for equalization and review?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Two meetings will take care of that.
Yes, sir. We have to open and close it.
And we have to have it 30 days apart, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's close to 30 days, three to four weeks.
With the pleasure of the Board?
No hearing, excuse me, no hearing, public hearing involved.
No, sir. We'll open it, and then if anyone has any, if anyone has any appeals, they'll call my office and they'll schedule the appeal with me. If we can't work it out, then I'll bring that to the Board between the opening and the closing of the Review Board dates.
And we need a motion on that.
I've asked for a motion, the pleasure of the Board.
I make the motion, Madam Chairman. I'll say.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I ask the Board Clerk to please put those on the calendar, April 20th and May 18th.
And we just had those prior to our meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And depending on what the outcome of the meeting dates are, I think we've been doing it like 30 minutes before the meeting starts, so I'll need, I guess I'll find out later this evening or tomorrow if the dates are, if the times are going to change when I publish that in the newspaper, I can have the right times on that.
Okay. Before you take your seat, I'm going to call up Mr. Yure from Yure Precinct. I was contacted indirectly by Mr. Yure about a piece of property that he wants to discuss with the Board as far as his proposal, so that's why I'm calling him up now. He's also been in conversation with Mr. Hill.
My name's Perry Yure. I live in 230 Corner High Road, Yure, North Carolina. Been living there all my life. I got a few things to be all right if I pay Tuesday.
Oh, the Board Clerk, she'll pass them out for you, sir.
Well, I don't want to make you that.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Several weeks ago, they had a tax sale at the Port High store, and Yure Volunteer Fire Department was very interested in it because the land was adjacent to their parking lot. And the lawyer there who auctioned off the property, he didn't understand why I didn't get a bid for it. And I told him, I said, "Well, if you didn't get a bid for it, it's a liability rather than an asset." And that same piece of property, probably most of you don't remember, Renee McGinnis was the tax administrator, was advertised to be sold, but for some reason, they pulled it from the documents, said the paperwork wasn't right. So what I'm trying to say is the county having received a sum of tax from that piece of land in over 30 years. If you look at the piece of white paper on the, on the left there, your packet, you can see the highlighted piece is the land that we're talking about. It's less than two tenths of acre. You can't put a trailer on it, can't put a septic tank on it. It's just useless. And if you stand, if you would stand in front of, if you're familiar with, in front of Yure Fire Department and face away from the building, it would be right in front of you. That's what you would see. Two different individuals donated these pictures just to show you what kind of conditions that we're talking about. The first picture in the, in the black packet is taken from Corner High Road. You can see a little bit of the road there, the first picture there. The second picture, you see Corner High Road, and you can see a heist to the left over there. I talked to this lady, she's a very elderly lady, living by herself, and I went and talked to her about, we were trying to get the land, and she said, "Oh, my God, please try to get the land. I'm scared the heist is going to catch on fire and set mine on fire." She said, she seen rats, snakes, and skunks and everything else out there. In fact, one skunk was killed right in front of it a while back. And then the third and fourth pictures just show you the condition of the heist. Yure Volunteer Fire Department, we would like to have the land. We would make it a parking lot and also would be used for training. We would have more members from the Fire Department tonight, but they had a call right at 5 o'clock. We had planned to sort of pack the Port Heights, but that didn't really happen, but we appreciate the ones that did come. It was a foul, hacky swamp road. What we would like, we would appreciate if you would consider donating this land to the Fire Department, and we would make it an asset for the community, for the county, and we would be able to use it for parking, for training, and a lot of the Fire Departments go from one place to the other for training, cross-training, and we would be used for that, not only for Yure, but for the other Fire Departments.
Any questions from?
Madam Chair, you said that Mr. Yure had been in contact with Chris, was that?
Yes, I talked to him.
Checking on the rules or something?
Mm-hmm. Checking on the rules and the history, and I also spoke with the county attorney about.
Does there have to be any transaction, take place and make it leave?
What we have done, the county has already purchased the land, but it was not bid on at the auction. So we're waiting for the deed to come back from Zikeas. Once the deed comes back from Zikeas, we can't record that deed to the county until the taxes and the bad taxes and the attorney fees are paid. That's $7,917.11, that was a big bid. So once we receive the deed from Zikeas and the county pays the taxes and the, and the legal fees, then it's up to the county if they wanted to do a deed gift. Mr. Yure would be more adept in talking about that as far as transferring the property to the Fire Department. And that would also make the property tax exempt going forward from 2023 because the Fire Department wouldn't own the property. Who wouldn't have to worry about the taxes on it anymore?
I think the appropriate, after we discussed, I think the appropriate Commissioner to make any motion or anything, and sitting over here to my right.
Right.
But I don't have any discussion. I've heard Mr. Yure's presentation and everything and hear the details on it. I don't have anything else to say.
Does the county attorney have any input?
No, Chris is correct. Once the county gets the deed back from Zikeas, then I could do a prepare a deed to gift if, if the Commissioners wish to donate it to Yure Volunteer Fire Department, which, which would be the right thing to do, I would think.
Commissioner Freeman?
I would certainly be in favor of that, Madam Chairman, in fact, that the county in Gates donated that property and those adjacent properties to, to Yure Fire Department for their use in training and parking.
Commissioner Hoffler?
Bye, ma'am.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion, when the taxes and everything are paid and like it's supposed to be, that we gift this land to the Yure Volunteer Fire Department, free of charge. I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a gift.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. It's, it's when it costs much more to clean up that land than what the bid was. In fact, I think, best I remember, we got an ISO ordinance on the book. If somebody had turned it in, you know, it would be right back on the county to clean it up if the code enforcement deemed that it was necessary to be cleaned. Thank you, appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Very well. Good to see you brought your secretary with you, too.
Departmental reports.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Finance report, Ms. Alton.